Filling that role. In addition, just in general, the city is growing. There's more complex accounting issues that are going on, more capital projects, more grant activity. As the city expands, you should always consider the need for increasing your staff over the accounting role. Just because it may get to a point where there's more than just one finance director or an entire department can handle. So, and I would say, in general, our assessment was the city of your size, city of your sizes that we have elsewhere have larger accounting staffs. And obviously, they don't, the lack of the vacancy within the position caused a lot of these issues, but just addressing the growth of the city and filling that role would be important. Okay? Number three is related to your cash management, specifically the pooled cash fund. So, the city utilizes what's called a pooled cash, pooled cash fund, but that is where multiple funds, general fund, debt service, utility fund, capital projects fund, special revenue funds. So, all your different, all your different funds will share one or multiple cash accounts, and they'll have a position within those cash accounts. Now, this is convenient because you have less bank reconciliations to maintain and take care of. So, there typically ideally should be less work involved. But the risk is that it's not monitored correctly, and one fund may overspend within their available funding. So, when they do, when that does occur, they are actually pulling, pulling from other funds. So, your general fund is unknowingly funding your capital projects, or you know, some other fund is, is, is filling that for a fund that goes into a deficit position. So, this should be monitored. Anytime there's a deficit position, there should be a reason for it. If there are funds that are within investment, an investment account that need to be transferred within to the pooled cash fund to address this deficit, that should be handled quickly and immediately. Or there should be some mechanism to identify that and address it, report it to council. All right? The next finding is related to your capital projects fund. So, we did cover the deficit position at the end of the year within your capital projects fund. So, we identified the, the city did have an initial capital improvement plan, which had several projects and, and a certain amount of funding allocated to those projects. But at some point during the year, the city overspent that available funding and ended up in the year in a, in a deficit position of about six million. So, that sits on the books today, but it will ultimately need to be transferred over from general fund or some other funding source in the future. All right? Next is comment number five. This is just related to the maintenance of your capital assets. So, typically, we've come in and assisted the city with the accumulation of any capital activity and depreciated those, those assets for, for tracking and for the financial statements. So, the more, the larger the city gets, the more difficult this is for a third party. Ideally, the city should have staff, and the city's going to be in a position, a much better position to be able, be able to identify certain projects and costs and track those much better than we can. So, our recommendation is that the city take that, take that, take that task over and start maintaining it in-house. All right? Next is related to your public funds investment act compliance. So, the, as part of the, in addition to the city's financial statement audit, we do, we do review the city's compliance with the public funds investment act. So, has the investment policy been reviewed and approved and adopted in accordance with this, with this act? Have the investment officers attended training? Are the required investment reports being submitted to council, no less than quarterly? So, there were some issues with the city's compliance that are noted here, but our recommendation, and this has been a finding for a couple of years now, but it's a pretty, pretty easy fix. But I, I think some consistency in the finance director department would address this. All right? And the, the next comment is related to a new accounting standard that is going to be adopted for the 24, 25 fiscal year. This is related to how the accounting for your compensated absences. Typically, this just would have been your paid time off or anything that was paid out upon termination. What this, what this new statement does is require cities to generally book any leave that is ultimately going to get used. So, that would not only include your comp time and paid time off, but it'd also include your sick time. So, traditionally, if that was dependent on a, a future event, it would not get considered at year end in the liability. But going forward, that's going to have to be considered. So, what's going to happen generally is your compensated absences liability is, is going to be increased quite a bit for that sick leave portion. All right? So, that concludes the findings. Be happy to take any questions.
Okay. So, on this paper, the presentation that you went through, you put that we got an unmodified report which showed that we have the highest level of assurance. And then you said that we had a clean audit. How is that possible with everything that you just said? You said that we're in deficit because we weren't managing our capital projects account by six million. We don't know what's in certain account, in, in one account, what money belongs to, what interest has been added or accrued for what funds. How can you give us a clean audit? Maybe I'm just uneducated, but I'm not understanding this.
Right. So, the, the audit opinion is based over the accuracy of the financial statements. So, when you look at the financial statements, are the cash balances correct? Are the payables correct? Are the assets correct? The information within the report you're, you're viewing is correct. So, that is where you, you, you get an unmodified audit opinion. The findings and recommendations, those are internal control related. So, you may have material weaknesses in operational areas and other internal control related areas. Those are the, that's where your findings come in. So, to receive an unmod, a modified audit opinion or an adverse, there would have to be material errors within the actual numbers and statements within the report. So, the numbers you're seeing are correct. They just identified deficit positions, like you said, or other, they identify those errors which are being reported. But those are the correct ending balances, and these financial statements are reporting that.
So, just to clarify, what you're saying is, is that when looking at the actual like numbers, once reported, even if they were reported double or misreported, the numbers that you're looking at, that's the only part you're reporting on?
So, they're, if they were reported double, they've been corrected, and the financial statements that you see do not contain the duplicate numbers. So, if you look at your, say you received a, a draft set of financial statements straight from the city's financial accounting software, it would be vastly different than what you're viewing here today. Because it might include those double accounting and other, other corrections that haven't been made yet. Once those corrections have been made and incorporated into the financial statements, that's where you would receive a clean audit opinion.
Yeah, I think what it does, though, it kind of gives us a false sense of, of, I don't know, assurance. And being a newcomer to the council as of May, you know, I was told early on by other council members that we, we got a good, we got a clean bill of health in terms of our, our audits. Which made me assume that we didn't have any problems, and then I'm told it's probably one of the worst we've seen in 40 years. So, I, I don't know whether our accounting, our terminology needs to be changed or something, but we get an A plus versus an A minus, maybe. I don't know, you know?
Yeah.
Something that tells me there's something wrong there, but is not.
Well, when we're talking unmodified audit opinion, yeah, that, that terminology is pretty set in the, in the accounting industry. There's not much, not much we can do with that. So, it is based off the reliability of the financial statements.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is this was a year ago.
Yeah.
Right? So, we expected this audit, let's be honest, to not be very pretty.
Yeah.
Right? So, I think a year from now, if our audit still looks like this, then we're in big trouble, right? Because we've been working with gradient for.
But I guess my point is, it's still going to stay unmodified either way, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like, you can be unmodified and have no money, or you can be unmodified and have money.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's essentially.
I like the having money and unmodified.
Yeah. But I, but I just want to make sure that this was, we're thinking this was retroactive, that in a year, working with gradient and getting our accounts better and getting that pooled money taken out of, we should be.
It was just awful confusing for me coming in going, I hear people say, this is the worst I've seen in 40 years, and then, oh, well, but we got a clean bill of health. And I'm like, that can't be possible.
Yeah.
And what I mean, but I didn't go through this.
Some misunderstanding, I would say. The, the findings and recommendations are really the areas that are going to highlight those, those issues. And at least half the issues we're, I'm reporting to you today have been in past audits. So, some of these, these, these issues were there last year. There's some new ones, obviously. But yeah, the findings, recommendations are designed to hopefully provide the city with, you know, a tool to implement that would prevent some of these errors in happening going forward. So, if there's, you know, the, we want, we want the reports coming out of the city's accounting system to be correct. So, when you get your monthly reports, those numbers should be accurate. These areas should be cleaned up. The pooled cash numbers should be corrected. You can, you should have accounting staff that can, you know, address it. And so, that, you know, that's the goal with the, with the findings and recommendations.
So, since we just got this report today, we haven't had a real chance to look and dive into it, and we'll be out of town all next week. So, look forward to possible another workshop. You know how I love to do them. So that we can actually go through and, and talk about it.
Sure, we understand.
Something we haven't done before.
Yeah, because this, this doesn't make sense. I mean, I don't feel comfortable seeing highest level of assurance when you're seeing a three-page document that says that we have all these problems. And again, I understand it was last year, but it just.
I don't, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think they can both be true. I think your numbers can be right, but things can be sloppy. I don't know if I'm saying that. I'm not an accountant, but that's, that's my la, that's my la language, right?
I get exactly what you're saying. Like, the numbers are correct.
Yeah.
But.
We, we got some cleaning up to do in terms of our internal controls, in terms of the pool accounting, in terms of understanding where our capital revenues are coming in.
You can look at it like, you know, if, if the audit wasn't giving you assurance that these numbers were correct, you may not know the actual position that the city is in. So, you may be under a, you know, impression that it's not quite as bad as I'm reporting to you here today. So, the, the accuracy of the financial statements are, are extremely important.
How can you say that when we don't have like origination of that pooled account?
So, when you say origination, what, what exactly?
We don't know how much developer fees we have and how much interest is there. We don't know how much impact fees go to what. I, I mean, I understand that you're saying that, but I.
So, there are, at this point, the pooled cash got into a deficit position. There are other impact fee accounts that are segregated, and they're reported within these financial statements. And there are other restrictions that are, that are also reported specifically related to the pooled cash. That, that is your main, your operating account generally, and that was pulling from your capital projects fund is, is the result, or is really what caused the, the deficit position. So, you went from a, what should have been restricted for capital projects, where you may have had, at the end of last year, you may have had three or four million within that fund, to a, a complete deficit of about 10 million, so.
So, that pooled cash.
Or six million, I'm sorry.
We have been using that despite the fact that we don't, like, we stopped, we kind of lost track of the accounting on it. We're still spending from that account? We're still using it?
As of the end of the year, yeah.
This was, this was last year. This was last year.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
I, I get that, but it's Texas penal code to not be able to use money from an account when you lose track of that account. You can't continue to spend from the fund if you don't know how much money is there. It's Texas penal code thirty-two forty-five, potential misappropriation of judiciary funds, also known as conscious indifference. You can't do that. So, if we're still using that account now, that's against Texas penal code thirty-two forty-five.
I think the question is, are we using that account now? Because this was a snapshot of a year ago, before we were using gradient. So.
But that's still spending money after we lost track of the accounting. Regardless of whether we have somebody who's trying to piece together this account, it's still being used after the fact that we lost track of this account. I talked to T M L. I, I've spoken to them without, with them about it. I talked to a lawyer named Bill the other day.
Okay, Robert, can you shed some light on this, please?
Sure. So, what I would say, first of all, I, I have a presentation after, you know, our auditor has here. So, I'd like to shed some light on that presentation that I hope would shed some light on the discussion. So, I don't have this, because I think it'll shed light on this discussion as well, because I, I think it is relevant. I, I think what, what a, a lot of things are, are being said are, are actually true in a lot of sense that can be happening at the same time. And so, being here at the time that I've been here, one of my first questions to staff was, what are we doing currently with monies that are coming in currently today? You know? Having whatever happened in the times past, fine, I, I can't fix the past. We can report past. We can make sure we drill down, find what happened, and report accurately, accurately, honestly, and as quickly as possible to the public, to our community. And that's what we're trying to do today. As council member said right now, it's, yeah, we expected this. We, we all knew this. We all knew that these weren't going to be great numbers. But we insist that this must be part of the process that must be done. So, reporting fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four numbers of what transpired, transpired, whether the actions that were taken, were taken. Moving forward in that pooled account, in the way that was being used, how it was being used, and all the intricacies, to be able to give you all those day-to-day operational issues, I cannot answer for that day-to-day. Because I would have to have gradient sitting here. I'm not even sure Pam on a day-to-day for that twenty twenty-three, twenty-four can answer. Because I will tell you another thing, too. The individuals that are in that twenty twenty-three, twenty-four period, all of that staff is no longer working for the city of Elgin. So, historically, we cannot even ask those individuals to see what transpired during that time. And so, what we're working with moving forward, when we start talking about that pooled account and what we're doing today in that pooled account, is not allowing those dollars to come in for any monies or any revenues to be able to further instigate any further confluence of those dollars back into those accounts the way that they were before. If I'm being asked a legal question, I can't give you a legal answer because I'm not an attorney. We do have one present here. So, I'm going to defer that question there. What I will say as your interim city manager is that we're working every day very hard to be able to do the very best with what we have. And the first thing is providing the most accurate reporting. Can I say that it's the best reporting with our auditors for sure? We wanted to make sure that we're doing that, that we have all the answers. Got to fill in some other pieces, which is finding those folks to come in. Because we're plugging holes with some great people from gradient, but that's not our solution. We, they're, they're, they're a great crutch, but they're, you know, they're a crutch for us. We need in-house experts. And so, again, to answer the question about the legalities of it, I, I can't answer for that piece. But what I will say, too, is that we know our current issues. We're working with our audit team to make sure that we're, we're trying to get better at what we're doing. And then that we're, we're not continuing the process moving forward, because that's the last thing I'm wanting to do, trying to do with this moving forward. So, we're, we're asking for guidance almost on a daily basis. This poor gentleman I met today, but has gotten to know me quite well. And only just to know that, please guide us, because we just don't know enough to get us to dig out of the mess that we're in. And I say that respectfully to everyone involved in the situation, because I'm in that same boat. So, I, I know that may not have answered the, the, your question entirely, but once I get to the slide that I'm going to show you, we're going to see how it has been a historic, ongoing issue that we have not cured. And I fear that we're going to continue to have some, some of those same issues. And not so much on maybe that particular issue with that pooled cash. Pooled cash does come up year to year. But I can't speak to legality with T M L, an attorney, or any legal question that you may have. So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dry. I cannot answer that. And if Mr. Mark wants to attempt it, then, then so be it. But I, I just can't go to that. I can only speak for, for staff at this point.
So, can we go ahead? If y'all don't have any more questions for him at this point, let us go ahead and work, and go through your manager's report. You can begin doing what you want to present to us.
Thank you. Back December of last year, and received, the audit that you just received today, right now, which is the twenty-four audit. And then next year, which I called again the twenty-five audit. So, if you start looking at the issues, or the findings, I should say, of what the twenty-three audit produced. So, last year, it was found to have internal control issues, pooled cash, bank reconciliation, P F I A, and compensated absences. And again, I, we put them in, in red, yellow, and green. Red being, you know, finding straight up. Yellow being improved, you know, where it's, it's, it's a mod, you know, medium level issue, but improving issue. And that really, again, if you look at our management responses to the statements, if you hadn't, I'd love to respond to those, or you can read those in your packets. Because I think it, it shows some, some thoughtful responses to the findings. Having said that, though, this find, those findings that you saw list out, the internal controls, pooled cash, bank racks, P F I As, capital assets, staffing, capital projects, and compensated absences, were all just listed. You all just heard them right now. That's in there. And so, you've seen from two years now, and it's gone back even more years, but I just don't, didn't want to crowd the screen. But you've seen for a couple of years now, pooled cash has been out there, bank reconciliation has not been done the way it really should be, the investment reporting, compensated absences, and compensated absences, we just haven't been accounting for. Sick leave, which we don't pay out sick leave. So, that's why we don't, well, we haven't done it. But internal, internal controls, which is very big. So, as we see year to year, these are things that we know that we need to be working on. Well, we already know that our, our P F I A investment reports had a couple of reports or quarter reports that were not completed. Capital assets remains a continuing issue that we're still working on. Bank reconciliations have become better. They've turned from red to yellow. Internal controls have been cured. Staffing remains a constant, but is getting, going to get better. If maybe I will turn that to green, I hope. I'm going to undershoot it, keep it yellow. Capital projects, we believe, have been cured. Pooled cash is, has gotten better. Compensated absence, we believe, will get better. But see how I'm saying and how we backtrack it where the story has been written now, just as the twenty-four story had been written prior to. And the story, I'm sorry to say, there's no other way, it's not a very good story. So, we know it was not done as best as we could. It was not tracked as best as it should have. There's a lot of things to like, you know, from it. Buck stops here with me, and that's the way things go. And so, from this point forward, what I'm trying to say is, we understand what needs to happen. We understand what needs to move forward with what we have. As far as the greater pieces and the questions you had, Councilmember St. Pierre, I cannot address that. What I can address are those pieces moving forward. What I can address is hiring good staff to dig us out of those other holes. Because if we don't have good staff, I can't turn the bank reconciliation process to green. Because I might not have enough people to sit there and do probably the best, the best job to get, and to keep internal controls maybe where it needs to be. However, that is. So, I guess in, in showing this graphic is what I'm saying is, there is a history of problems that we have been needing to cure. Our auditor, our third-party audit team has come in and fully admitted that it's ugly. It's gotten better. It's going to remain somewhat ugly until we dig ourselves out. There's no shortcuts. So, it's going to still take some work. It's still going to take some grind, and it's going to take a lot of work coming out of our finance department and out of your management team. And y'all are going to play a big role, too. Because come January, you're going to get those financial reports on a monthly basis. You're going to get quarterly financial or investment reports come to you, so that you'll have somebody standing here and giving you investment reports. And so, you know the investment, a status of, of this community and this city. And so, you're watching this go on. And so, that you can have things that could be mutual, not mutually exclusive, or you can have two things happening at once where you could have bad news, but it's honest bad news. Or honest, yeah, honest bad news. Until we turn that upside down and makes them, you know, turn it black. So, that's all I can give you is just sheer honest information while we're working on turning red into black, red into black.
Could we look into Councilmember St. Pierre's question, though, about the pooled cash, making sure?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, I'll, I'll be asking our city attorney to guide me through that and see if we can, how we can get that done now.
Just to make sure we're compliant.
Yes, ma'am. We will, we'll do that. Yes, ma'am?
I've got other questions about that account. I ain't done with that. That's not the only one I have.
But as for Deputy Mayor Protemp, yes, ma'am?
I have a lot of other questions, Karen. So, going back to this pooled account, I know that you have it now as yellow, saying that we're getting better. Seems like we're still using this account, like I said, without having proper track of, of, of counting. And so, going off of everything else that I've researched, co-mingling without proper accounting is enough to get a state auditor or CPA to ensure finding a material weakness? And it's enough to get the comptroller to flag the city for not complying with local government code one oh two. I also have some other questions, like, can we say for sure that any negative balances were not covered by funds that couldn't be used, such as, like I said, interest? Can we say for sure that we weren't using interest to cover negative balances? Because if we can't, and we cannot prove it, then we're going against Texas Local Government Code one oh two point zero zero nine and one oh two point zero one zero, which states that you cannot cover funds without council approval, too. I, I mean.
Do you want me to answer your question?
Yes.
We are not using what you're referring to as a pooled cash account. It is sitting at logic until we're done figuring out the allocations. We have a consolidated account that we opened up at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-four. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
We're not using the pooled cash that you're referring to. It's still the six million dollar sitting at logic that I referred to the last meeting we were at.
Okay, that's now, but even before, when we lost track, can we say that interest in other funds, for sure, weren't properly used to cover negative balances on something else?
I don't understand your question.
There are certain funds in pooled cash accounts that are not allowed to be used to cover other funds, such as impact fees, developer fees, and interest accrued from those accounts, since it's in a high-yield interest account. Can we say for sure during twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four that those funds were not used irresponsibly or illegally?
I cannot say that I did not work in finance in twenty-three.
So, I think that what we can conclude for this, because we can go through this back and forth all night long, we can't do and go back and. Uh we can't do and go back and find, because we don't have the people to ask, we don't have a clue of how it was done, we don't have a track of how it was done. Going back, uh we'll never get you anywhere if you're going backwards. But you need to figure out what we're gonna do going forward and make for sure that what we think may have happened, and yes, what we think may have happened, because I wasn't there, I'm not a finance person, Pam was not there, she's not a finance person per se. And so we have people that unfortunately, we did the best that we could possibly do at the time. Yes, ma'am, okay? So the thing of it is, what we need to understand, we can't live in the past. You have to go forward, and what it is that we're going to do going forward is what we need to work on. I understand, Councilmember St. Pierre, I'd love to know what happened, too, but I wasn't on the council then, nor was I mayor.
Okay, so we're not going to write the body and find out?
Excuse me, I have the floor. We're not going to go back and try to figure out what all did happen while we're still spinning our wheels and not going forward.
You can go forward and also look back. We have a right as constituents and residents to know where our money was spent and how it was spent. And so to say that we're not gonna go back to look at it, but we shouldn't go back, we absolutely should.
How can you if you don't know what to go back for?
Because you get a forensic audit, and that's their job.
You know what? I think that is the key problem of what we have already, is the word forensic audit. We have to go, oh, Jesus, yes, Jesus needs to come on now, because we definitely need him.
You not wanna know where your tax dollars were spent?
I'm not saying I don't want to know.
But that's what you're saying, what you're saying, you don't want to go back.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not. Don't put words. I'm saying I don't wanna spend months and years looking back. I want to go forward.
That's you. I wanna spend months and years to go back. I wanna know where my tax dollars were, and my constituents wanna know where their ta- tax dollars were spent.
Respectfully, we understand what you said. Now, moving...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you give us some more insight onto what a forensic audit is? We talked about it before, but can you give us some more information on that? And what that entails, what that does, what that looks for, what kind of things that would fix, if you were to fix it?
Well, again, so forensic audit will be uh have to be mapped out, and it'll be the details that you put into it. Because you you'd have to put the parameters, you'd have to say, I I and voted on, to say, we need to go back from these years to these years to look for this type of potential, this possible potential, these sort of findings. Not just general snooping, um general um financial reviews of uh every potentiality. Because what will end up happening, they're gonna ask for a uh an RFQ to be sent out for forensic audit services. And they're gonna say, well, what are our guardrails? And they say, we need to go back the last number of years, we need the scope, right? So we need you to look at this, uh these types of accounts uh to make sure that they were done according to state law, general county principles, and provide us, you know, the findings. And then you pick the firm, they'll give you costs, timelines. It it could happen to where you open, you could have a a one track happen, and it could open a layer, and it could open layers. So a lot of things can happen from those things. But what will generally happen is that then that firm will come back and say, well, we found this, do you want us to continue to travel down the road this way, or however it may be? But you do have to generally come out. It's not a one-size-fits-all. Uh let's let's have a forensic audit in just general terms. You do have to put a scope out there of what you're looking for. Because it will be different for different cities, uh and it and it's not a one-size-fits-all.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other discussion? Councilmember St. Pierre, you have more questions?
No, you just put it on the agenda the way that I wanted it to begin with, and I'm sure it's because you don't want a forensic audit.
No, it's because it was not an emergency, and that's what you asked for, and I really don't like...
No, I sent you an email to ask you for an agenda item to discuss this, but not in this manner. I asked for an agenda item, not a discussion in the manager's report.
Let's do point of order on the topic that we're on. Thank you. Okay.
And then we're gonna have a workshop?
Uh yes.
Yeah.
So that we can sit down and talk about it.
Can we, yeah, and then maybe during that workshop, can this be discussed as well?
Yes, yes, yes.
If we were to wanna go forward with something that you...
Yes, yes. All right. Moving on to our next one, discussion of the approved twenty twenty-five tax rate on that's your annual report?
Yes, ma'am. Uh thank you, Mayor Council. So while we're at in talking finances, all things finances, we did wanna uh talk about SB eighteen fifty-one. Eighteen fifty-one, as it's been talked about within cities across the state of Texas, um has come into effect, and what it uh talks about, as it's being uh described and as it applies to cities in the way it's um described and defined, um the tax code, I'm gonna read off on the tax code side, defines a tax year a- as a calendar year. Tax specific, the act specifically specifies that a tax year begins on or after September first, twenty twenty-five. Um what SB eighteen fifty-one states is that if you don't have your uh audit, a audit, an approved audit um ready by the time uh you consider um your tax rates, and you approve uh raising your taxes, then or you cannot raise your taxes if your audit has not been completed. As that's uh understood through at least TML, and because this uh law has just come into effect this year, uh the way TML has understood this, other cities have understood this, um many other cities, and Texas Municipal League has published their opinion through their attorneys as well, is that the tax year actually applies to the twenty-sixth year. Our fiscal year obviously starts uh in twenty twenty-five. And so as you approve an increase of ta- of the tax rate, obviously this year, for us in like cities uh that have raised their rates, and I sent samples of some communities, I'll guess as one. Uh they pushed back on uh Governor, or I should say the Lieutenant Governor, uh in some certain statements where he's uh said that, yeah, the tax rate should not have or or could not have because of uh SB eighteen fifty-one. That hasn't made the courts yet. Uh TML believes that they are right in the position that tax year actually applies to municipalities in that sense, uh or fiscal years and tax years. And to be honest, there are some cities that fiscal years actually start on a tax year. So that may be the understanding, too. Not all cities run October one, they some run January one. So that may be some of the lack of understanding maybe at the state level. Regardless, uh we are uh are the tax rate y'all uh passed is a qualified tax rate, we believe. Um again, I'm not an attorney, I'm merely reading off from TML's opinion, actually regurgitating that. Any uh legal advice should be given by your uh city attorney. And so please sprinkle that with that uh footnote uh that I'm merely restating what TML uh has restated back to us. I know some questions have come to me specifically on the legal uh question to that. I don't have that yet, and I think there has been some questions back to our city attorney. But I'll let our city attorney speak speak to that. I just wanted to give what I know from TML's side and the way that they're treating this with other cities. That's what I can give you for that. There's no action on this one. I just wanted to give a report on this, seeing that we're talking all things finances. And just once again, talk about, hopefully put a nice bow on this and kind of move forward. Nothing's changed from the last time I talked about it.
Have you talked to Mark?
Yeah, Kenny.
About him?
Give us a little bit more, Mark, since he's here. I mean, I know it's gonna be the same thing, but...
I'd be happy to be there, but I would rather before we did that executive session.
Okay, thank you.
I'd prefer that we begin. We can't convene into executive session today anyways. We don't have anything listed on the executive session, so we can't make a motion to talk about anything in the executive session.
Well, can you go ahead and go to your next subject?
Sorry. Um special events, uh so, sorry, so update on the cost incurred by fee waivers for special events in the city of Elgin.
Hello again.
Hello again. So much of me today, I'm so sorry. Uh so in your packets, you have received two memos from me. This is in response to the question that was asked in the September council meeting about how much money we spend in fee waivers. I worked with Chief Noble and Director Gonzalez to come up with these numbers, and they include any waivers that were made for public works time, PD time, park rentals, street closures, et cetera. Everyone has had a chance to review it.
So to the tune of about fifty-one thousand? Great. Thank you, Council. Uh next, uh in your packet, you'll have your historic review board quarterly report. If anyone has any questions on that. Can answer any of those? If not, uh next item?
Have we heard anything back from Textot?
For on uh item number four, or which one are you talking about?
Yes, for the crosswalk.
Oh, uh we have. Mr. Pierre, did you want to talk to that, or you want me to speak to that?
Crosswalk.
On the crosswalk? So I I guess I can speak to it.
Bo.
Yeah, Bo.
I know, it's like...
He's like, whatever, are you looking for your dad or what? That would be you, Bo. Okay, let's go with first names. All right, Bo. Keep it, keep it less formal. Yeah, update on on crosswalk, Bo.
So as you, many of you guys can imagine, it's a very fluid situation. We did talk to the local Textot office. They were unaware that the letter was gonna come out until it actually was sent to all the cities. Uh so they were re- reading at the same time it was being distributed to the cities. What they basically have come in as an email as of this morning, we basically said, this is what the design looked like. We want to go ahead and try to get an exemption in order to leave it, because we felt potentially it did not meet the merit of what they were trying to account for. Textot said they would take a look at it, um they would have to go back and have conversations about what the intent of the letter was. They emailed me today, and they basically said, you have three options. One is remove it within the thirty days from October eighth. Provide a plan of when you could actually remove it if it was going to be later than the thirty days. Or provide a stamped and sealed letter saying that it it aligns with the FHWA and it meets with the uh Texas Municipal Traffic Control Devices. And so staff, after talking to uh city manager, basically directed us to take a look at it. Uh we've gotten all the information that was submitted for the grant, and we will try to put together something to be able to submit to Textot, saying that we feel that it still meets the merits of health and safety for uniform traffic control devices, similarly to what you've seen a couple of other cities are going to submit. Other than that, that's the best I can do. Will they accept that, irregardless if it's stamped and sealed? If it's just as simply, well, now we have a stamped and sealed letter, and so the liability then becomes the city's issue to keep it there? I don't, can't tell you how that will exactly play out. I can't give you a timeline, other than we have to submit before that thirty-day period, that letter, if we are looking for an exemption. So between now and November, around basically November seventh, if the city decides to submit something, obviously, council won't meet again, but we'll brief you guys on what that plan is, if we do think that it does meet the merit for an exemption, or if we're gonna turn in a plan and ask for an extension. I have talked to the local Textot, basically said, look, we have hog eye, we have day of the dead. There's no way that that thing is gonna be covered within the thirty-day time period. And they've basically, when they restated it, and I made them put it in writing, they said they will look at exemptions as long as we have a plan as to when we could address it, if we so chose to address it that way.
Do you think it'll help if General Motors steps in, since they gave us the money?
I I don't think that it, I don't think it would hurt to get a letter at a minimum from the grant. Um I can tell you, and briefly, again, all this information today. The grant basically was awarded based on health and safety, essentially, to extenuate, to make it better in that particular area. What Textot has specifically asked is, that's all good backup material. If they'll actually use that as part of their decision or not, I don't know. Um again, city funds or not city funds, I don't know if they'll even consider that. What they have said that they will look at specifically is an engineered letter that says it's in conformance with FHWA and with um the Municipal Traffic Uniform Device Code. So that is what they've put on writing, so that's what we're gonna do at a minimum, try to address.
And we're just talking about the crosswalk, right? Because from my assumption, reading the federal law, the mural in the middle of the street is fine. It's just pertaining to the parts where the crossbars are, because from what I've read, um the crossbars, uh the crossbar's supposed to be uh standard, you know, crossbars. Not supposed to be any bright colors, there's not supposed to be change in the pattern. So we're just talking about that space, correct?
So that is the fluid situation. The letter from Textot, from the governor at that direction, explicitly says murals as well, that that conflicts and causes, it's not uniform, because you would expect it to be black, and it could, you confuse people driving. So the way that the letter actually was worded, which I think all of you guys have gotten a copy of, it specifically calls out murals or any kind of artwork, any kind of striping, whatever the case may be, on a roadway that's meant for traffic, essentially. So we'll address what we can with that, but I can't give you a definitive answer of how they're gonna review it, what they're gonna review it against, and how they're gonna interpret their direction that they're getting.
Thank you for the updates.
Yep. Thank you. Uh next item, notification of the appointment of Kaylee Frye as the Economic Development Director by Economic Development Corporation. On uh this is uh on my part, a notification that on October the eighth, the EDC Board um at their board meeting, appointed from interim to Director, Ms. Kaylee Frye. And it was, it is just a notification on our part uh to the uh council. And so that was the intent and the idea behind the item.
All right, we're moving on to our consent agenda. We have items one through six. Uh minutes for September ninth, September sixteenth, September twenty-third, and then possible action to approve a waiver of noise ordinance for hog eye. Uh street dance on Friday, October twenty-fourth through midnight. Then a resolution of the city of uh uh Elgin, Texas ratifying pavement, payment, I'm sorry, and authorization of the repair of the pump four at the water treatment plant. Uh then number six is a resolution of City of Elgin, Texas authorizing a routine payment to WGA engineers for design of the wastewater treatment plant two. Does anything need to be pulled for discussion?
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the consent consent agenda.
Right, yes.
It's been moved in second, and we'll begin with Councilmember Krim.
Krim, yes.
Roger, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kaznowski, yes.
Upsy, yes. Wayne, yes.
Love, yes.
St. Pierre, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Uh ordinance amending chapter, and I read all of that for the public hearing. I won't read it again. It's the same thing that we had a public hearing on, so um... Oh, there we go. Keep moving around.
Yes, um I'll try to summarize it as best. It's a lot of jargon, but as you're aware, P and Z, from time to time, they meet, and they have workshops where they look at the current development standards, codes, and things of that nature. they meet and they have workshops where they look at the current development standards, codes, and things of that nature. Sometimes go through, uh, and have like a refresh, compare it to other municipalities in the general area, or if some particular members have concerns and they wanna walk it through. Um, so we did have a couple of workshops here recently where we went through a couple of different codes. And basically, to summarize what's before you today, is changing the code currently as it exists. When you're building a structure at the hundred-year floodplain, the city of Elgin's code is very specific. It says the structure's base must be at or above the hundred-year floodplain, which essentially means you're right there. After a lot of debating back and forth, um, you know, they've had some engineers come in and kinda discuss it with them. What they're proposing is to change that code to basically be, the structure must be one foot above the hundred-year floodplain or higher, essentially. Obviously, developers, anyone building a home, anyone that's near a creek or whatnot, they would have to take that into account in setting their structure. Um, most of the rest of the changes in there are just, you know, all of our codes basically say, or latest version of. We basically have updated a lot of the terminology in there to be what the latest is today. It still is latest version thereof, basically, but basically if we're gonna change one section, we went ahead and rewrote through it to just bring it up to date as it is. But at the basis of this particular one is they essentially wanted to ensure those structures are set one foot above the hundred-year floodplain instead of at and above. A few administrative items that they did through the workshops too, is they came up with a list of very specific notes that they wanted to see on Platts, so that it wasn't a different iteration or a different version from different engineers. They basically came up with a checklist that's been incorporated, it's already on the website for engineers going forward. So administratively, they did that version, but this is actually a code that gets reviewed against.
And this is for new builds?
It, yeah, it does not go backwards. So there did, there, it would only be new builds they're going for that are not already on the books, you know, platted with.
They're planted, they're.
Yeah, if they're platted and they have elevation set, those are what they are, it would only be things moving forward.
What about renovations?
So essentially from a renovation, as you guys are well aware, the, the floodplain maps are changing, uh, throughout Bashrop County and Travis County. Those have all submitted, the city's gone back and forth, and it'll probably be a minimum a year before the actual maps come out, but we've been working back and forth with the modeling. Floodplain insurance or flood insurance is a property to property and is based on the bank, essentially. So from a city's standpoint, if you're doing a retrofit, it would only be against what you are retrofitting, like if it was a building addition. So if the existing building was at, right at the hundred-year floodplain and you were doing an addition, essentially that addition would be looked at to be one foot above. But it's not like you would go and raise your entire house or structure or anything else and go about retrofit. So it's only applied to quote-unquote new going forward.
Further questions?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
We moved in second, and we'll begin with Councilmember Kaznowski?
Kaznowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Lane, yes.
Love, yes.
St. Pierre, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Crim, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes. Do we have any further announcements?
Oh, wait, can we, can I just ask a question to you real quick?
Mark?
No, no.
Peyton.
Peyton.
Peyton, sorry, Peyton.
Where is the holding place for Travis County residents?
It's at the church by the, uh, ninety, if I'm not mistaken.
Or they can go to Maynor prior to that.
No, I, I think, yeah. I think it's different depending on early voting versus.
It is. Let me pull it up so I don't butcher it. But, so our early voting location is, um, for Travis County, is Maynor Elementary Early Learning Center. The election day locations, the two closest to us, obviously, um, would be that Maynor Elementary Early Learning Center, and, uh.
Say it, say it, say it.
Min- Ministerios Fidelia Iglesia Cristania.
It's the church right next to the building.
It's the church on County Line Road.
That's easy, that's easy for you to say.
Yes.
Something, something, something.
And while I'm up here, um, Bashrop County is the North Bashrop County Community Annex, seven oh four Bull Run Road.
That's the tax office, right?
Yeah. No, 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 no.
Oh, it's the old one, that's right, I'm sorry, that's right, you're right. The old tax office.
The old one has been updated.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Peyton.
Anything else? Eight oh five, and we are adjourned.